Good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock. A call to order, the August sixth, two thousand and twenty four meeting of the Fort Atkinson City Council. Clark Everett, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilman Jacob?
Here.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman Schultz?
Here.
President Lusco here?
Here.
Uh, Councilman Becker is excused absence.
Okay, item three, public hearings. We have none this evening. Item four, public comment. The city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon: name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. And note for those following it on Zoom tonight, if anyone on the Zoom wishes to speak during the public comment period, please raise your virtual hand through Zoom as the chat box is not monitored during the meeting and those on the call, please remain muted if you're not recognized to speak. We'll start with those who are here in person. First person is David Frigo. If you would please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dave Frigo. I live at four oh nine Milo Street and last night when I was walking my dog along the river, I noticed you couldn't walk on a good section of the sidewalk because of the goose droppings. And today I happened to see there's some young women doing some cleanup work along the bike trail. So I stopped to talk to them. And they knew about the problem, but they didn't know who was supposed to be in charge of cleaning it up, but they said they would make sure that their supervisor would know about it and she could pass the word on. I just wanted to compliment those girls. You know, they're very good to talk to and you know, they they passed, you know, they're good, accommodated. So good. You got some good people working for you.
Thank you. Uh, next up we have Lori Walgemuth. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Okay. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lori Walgemuth. I live at three oh seven East Milwaukee Avenue. My address is Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. I spoke a few weeks, weeks back in June, reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, I was told there was no talk of it except by request so that I'm, I am asking an official role count of who is for and who is against it publicly so that we, the people know where our officials stand here. You should be able to do that within my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only two individuals who have signed up in person. Um, I think we have at least one on the Zoom. Mr. House, I see you raising your hand. Um, if you would like to go ahead, floor is yours. Please state your name and address for the record. I think you may be muted.
You're correct. Sorry.
All right, we've got you now.
John House, one oh four Jefferson Street, Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. Uh, first thing I'd like to mention is excuse me, is the school board under the jurisdiction of the city council? Can I get a thumbs up or a wave yes or no?
Well, th- this is not a a discussion back and forth. Um, the quick answer to that question is.
Okay, well then, uh, the next issue I guess I'd like to bring up is, uh, I was poking through a website and I wanted to list the names of the people from Fort Atkinson, the young men who have been killed in service. And, uh, the first one is Terry Beck. He was a lieutenant corporal with the Canine Corps, died in Vietnam. Then we have Captain George Daley. We have Captain Andrew Kitzinger. We have Private Gary Smith and Sergeant Larry Smith, both of who I went to high school. I went to high school with three of those. Because of those brave men, we are sitting in a great country yet. I would like to honor them by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. House, if I may?
You may.
Is my I apologize for interrupting you. But I'd like to, I gave a condensed version of what the public comment portion of our agenda is at the outset of this item. And maybe it's worth taking a minute or two here to ground us even further in the ordinance governing this part of our agendas. It's covered under section two dash fifty-four, rules and bylaws. And the subject matter of speakers' comments is not limited to agenda items, as you know. But prohibited topics include three things: political topics of any nature, issues regarding or with city staff, and also any subject that's not relevant to the interests of the city of Fort Atkinson. That last one is a little ambiguous, I realize. But it is up to the council president to decide on the appropriateness of any of the speaker's comments. Fair game for agenda items or items that are on our agenda. It's a budget matter, traffic concern, proposed ordinance, or some delivery of our services, we want to hear from you. But remember, this is a public comment session. It's not an open mic. It's not a question and answer session either for good reason. The law prevents us from engaging in discussion on topics that have not been publicly noticed. It's also up to the city council president to decide what is appropriate and what is not for speakers' comments. I don't want this to turn into an open mic for people to recite their favorite passage or other things that, that have not been deemed through our ordinance as in the city's interest. I appreciate the sentiment. I, I, I very much do. But it's not an open mic to, to recite your favorite passage. With that, I will return to you the remainder of your time. You have a minute and twenty-four seconds left.
Okay, the next item that I'd like to bring up is, uh, the Banker Road Project, the property that the city purchased. Um, how much money have we spent on this project? Uh, how much have we borrowed? How much interest have we paid? What is the balance sheet on that right now? So that I know that's been going on for a few years now. How much in debt are we? And I'd like to see that published in the paper so that or on, uh, online so that the city citizens can see what's all going on there. Cause I have no clue. So I'll just pay for the last I'll pay for the last ten seconds for future use.
Okay. Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else online who would like to offer comments? I don't see nor hear anyone. Um, the public comment session is closed. Item five, consent agenda. The consent agenda outlined below is hereby presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed, items five A through five F.
Second. The motion is second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Motion is to approve the consent agenda as listed, items five A through five F. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Petitions, requests, and communications. Item six A, review and possible action on a proclamation recognizing National Water Quality Month. Manager Housman.
Thank you. Uh, Wisconsin has long been known for its bountiful natural resources, including eighty-four thousand miles of rivers and streams, approximately eight hundred miles of Great Lakes shoreline, uh, more than fifteen thousand inland freshwater lakes, five million acres of wetlands, and one point two quadrillion gallons of groundwater. Uh, the Rock River does run through the city of Fort Atkinson. Uh, our water utility works daily to provide safe uninterrupted supply of drinking water. Uh, and that water supply is tested continuously to ensure that it's safe and meets or exceeds all of our, uh, local requirements. So, uh, let's see, um, this is, uh, August is National Water Quality Month, and in recognition of that, uh, we do have a proclamation on the agenda tonight for action by the city council. Uh, staff does recommend that the council approve that proclamation, a Recognizing National Water Quality Month, uh, and present it to, uh, Water Superintendent Jeff Armstrong, who is with us tonight.
I move to approve the proclamation recognizing National Water Quality Month in the city of Fort Atkinson.
Second. The motion is second to approve the proclamation. Any discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to approve the proclamation recognizing National Water Quality Month in the city of Fort Atkinson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Jeff, will you come forward and receive the proclamation?
Okay, resolutions and ordinances. Item seven A, first reading of an ordinance creating section ninety-four dash five of the city of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the authority of crossing guards. We have Chief Bump with us this evening.
Hello, everyone. Um, Wisconsin State Statute authorizes a community to, um, hire and deploy crossing guards that can legally stop traffic. Uh, but in order to do that, you have to have an ordinance that adopts state statute so that you're, you have the backing of the state statute for those employees to actually go into the road and stop traffic. This is an ordinance that we don't currently have. Uh, did some state, some research, uh, developed the ordinance draft, used, uh, this language directly out of state statute, and that's the draft that you had before you. We went before the ordinance committee a few weeks ago. Um, and it was, went through a legal review and also a city manager's review, and we're here today for that first reading. The one thing I want to make sure as we go through this process and hopefully adopt this ordinance is that I really, it's important that we have it active and ready to go before the first day of school this year, and I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the chief?
Um, if you could maybe describe how many crossing guards you're looking to, to have, and, um, do you have already interested individuals?
We currently have a crossing guard program have for many years. We currently have two full-time crossing guards and one substitute crossing guard for our school year. However, we have four crossing guard locations in the city. So, uh, we've been recruiting since May to make sure our numbers are up and still have no applicants. So we're hoping to hire two, uh, permanent crossing guards, one to work at Rockwell School and the other one to work at Berry School. Those are the two locations we all have vacant this year if we don't get any applicants.
Yeah, thank you.
Do the crossing guards, um, receive at least minimal training so that we're uniform with what they do, that one guard does the same thing as the other guard?
Correct. We, uh, we have a special training where we've adopted best practices for entering the roadway, stopping traffic and crossing pedestrians. Our, uh, crossing guards go through that training initially, and then we have, uh, kind of an information sheet that we use to refresh each year. Uh, every summer before school starts, we have an annual meeting where the crossing guards come in and meet with our school resource officer, who is their direct supervisor or manages the crossing guard program.
Thank you.
Yep.
Was there a problem that really incited us to try to get this ordinance in or just?
I was doing some research and, uh, came across the state statute that says that we need to adopt or cities have to adopt an ordinance and adopt the state statute and I'm, made me interested. Wow, I should, I'd like to go read the city ordinance and found that we didn't have one. So I'm
But it's just kind of a cover our own behind.
Yeah, it's just getting things in the right place. It was an ordinance that we just didn't have. And, um, so I, I quick, uh, put together the work to, to come up with one so we can get it before the school year.
Um, I'll move to direct the city manager to prepare the ordinance for a second and possible third or final reading at the meeting on August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second. The motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to direct the city manager to prepare the ordinance for a second and possible third and final reading at the meeting on August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven B, first reading of an ordinance to amend section sixty-six dash thirty-eight of the city of Fort Atkinson Code of General Ordinances relating to members of the Plan Commission. Manager Housman.
Thank you. Uh, so for many years, the city engineer, uh, position and the public works director position were combined into one position. Uh, earlier in two thousand and twenty-four, we upgraded that, uh, upgraded the assistant city engineer position, which hadn't been filled for several years into a city engineer position with a new job description and responsibilities with the goal of, of separating out those two positions. So, uh, we have an ordinance that, uh, includes the personnel of the Plan Commission, and that is sixty-six, three, eight. Uh, and that in, indicates that the city manager serves as the chairperson of the Plan Commission and the city engineer serves as the secretary. So what we are proposing is an amendment to section sixty-six, uh, dash thirty-eight, uh, to allow the city manager to appoint either the city engineer or the public works director to serve as the secretary of the Plan Commission. And providing this, um, discretion over which person, which position serves on the Plan Commission will allow the best person suited for the role, the opportunity to, to serve there. So, um, the ordinance committee did review this at the meeting on July sixteenth and recommended that staff bring this ordinance before the full city council for a first reading. We do recommend that, uh, the city council direct me to prepare the ordinance for a second reading on August twentieth. Uh, it does not, uh, we do not expect any sort of financial impact associated with this ordinance amendment. Uh, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any, any questions from the council for, uh, the city manager?
No question.
Okay.
If not, then I would entertain a motion. I'd move to direct the city manager to prepare the ordinance for a second reading at the meeting on August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
The motion is a second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to direct the city manager to prepare the ordinance for a second reading at the meeting on August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved. Reports of officers, boards, and committees. Item eight A, city managers' report. Manager Housman.
Thank you. Uh, on July twenty-second, the city held a corridor planning kickoff meeting for the Janesville Avenue and Main Street corridors. About thirty people attended the meeting, uh, and provided input on how they use, uh, those two particular roads and possible improvements. On July twenty-ninth, the work groups for each corridor met and offered additional input. Later in September, the work groups will meet again and offer feedback on draft plans prepared by our consultants. Uh, and after that, then those plans will come to, uh, the Plan Commission and the city council for review and feedback, uh, through an approval process. On July thirtieth, the community celebrated the fire department with a swearing in and promotional ceremony. Uh, and as if on cue, on August first, uh, member, the members of our department responded with eight trained EMS professionals to an incident on the Kashnan Mounds Country Club, um, parcel, where they revived an unconscious patient and saved a life. So events like this continue to highlight the need for the full-time department as well as our well-trained, paid-on-call members. The Loan Review Committee met on July thirtieth, and the Economic Development Commission met on August fifth and approved a fifty thousand dollar capital catalyst revolving loan fund loan uh, to Little Rainbow's Play Place, which is a, an indoor playground to be located at thirteen thirty-five North High Street. We're excited to welcome a new business to the city and support them with this low-interest loan. Uh, soon we will be scheduling the loan closing and the check presentation, and we'll do an issue of press release as well. Uh, after this loan, there's still about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in that, uh, revolve revolving loan fund to loan out. Uh, so if anybody has, uh, good ideas for new businesses or knows somebody who wants to start or expand a business in the city of Fort Atkinson, please review our website for more information. Uh, the Joint Review Board met on August first and approved the two thousand and twenty-three Tax Increment District Annual Reports filed with the Department of Revenue. Uh, I encourage everyone to attend the city council workshop on August twentieth at six PM, where the future of the city's tax increment districts will be discussed more thoroughly with our, um, financial advisors. I'd like to recognize, uh, Fort Healthcare for working with Habitat for Humanity of Wauke, um, of Waukesha and Jefferson Counties, uh, to provide a duplex lot for their pilot project in Jefferson County. Uh, the Fort Atkinson Community Foundation also contributed to those efforts. Uh, likewise, both Fort Healthcare and the Community Foundation have invested substantial funds into the county's Live Local Development Fund, which will support multifamily residential developments in Jefferson County, and that fund is up to nine point five million dollars at this point. Uh, as you may have noticed, We Energies is working on a project on Riverside Drive. The block of Riverside Drive from Robert Street to Sherman Avenue will be closed, uh, until August thirtieth. Uh, but it will be open in time for the start of the school year on September fourth. We have some exciting things happening at our wastewater treatment facility. Uh, staff is working on, the, uh, staff is working with the city of Jefferson on a regional approach to the treatment and disposal of biosolids. Uh, we continue to work on the solar energy prod- project to help offset that enormous, uh, energy usage at the facility. And then we will be celebrating the completion of the facility upgrade project with an open house on September twenty-first. So more information to follow on that, but please, uh, save the date. Uh, also, the city is still hiring. Uh, we have a youth services librarian position open as well as the city engineer position, a public works crew person, and a police officer. So if anybody knows anybody who's interested, please direct them to the city's website for more information. Uh, and finally, I want to recognize our team in the Parks and Recreation Department as well as Public Relations Executive Assistant Sarah Wayart for getting Squeegee, the city's new pool cleaning robot featured in the municipality magazine. Um, people must be hearing good things about Squeegee because the aquatic center attendance has been fantastic with twelve thousand, one hundred and six visitors in July. Uh, and I know we draw from a much larger reason, region than just the city of Fort Atkinson. Um, but that twelve thousand, one hundred and six visitors equates to ninety-six point eight percent of the city's population. So I would say that our, our aquatic center is, is a pretty popular place in the summer. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Item eight B, Public Works and Parks Operations Facility Project Update. We have Public Works Superintendent Williamson with us.
All right, good evening. Uh, I hate to follow Squeegee, but I'm gonna follow him anyway. Um, this is just a, a, our second update. Uh, it's labeled Q two in your, in your program, but the, the reality is, uh, we're not really following the calendar year quarters, but this is, is our second three-month update for the council. Uh, so I'll just walk you through. We'll keep a, a very similar format for every one of these so that the information is out there for everyone and it's easy to follow. Uh, so, uh, so the first, first item we'll, we'll cover is just progress of where we are today. Um, and I, there's some big things that have happened in the last several months. So the, we'll walk through some pictures and I'll show you where we're at today. Uh, the second thing we'll have is, uh, progress over the next three months. Uh, there will be a lot of progress, not visual, over the next three months. The visual things are really up on the outside shell, so the inside, the inside work will be taking place, but uh, there's a lot of stuff going on in the next three months. And then I'll give the budget update where we are, uh, to date, and then where we're heading in the near future. So progress to date, uh, these are the things that, uh, have been completed since the last time that we met and talked. The entire building foundation is, is obviously complete, and all the exterior precast walls are standing. Uh, structural steel, uh, which is the superstructure inside of the precast walls, that is about eighty percent complete to date. Um, they're actually doing the interior or the roof panels as we speak, and over the next couple of weeks, they should be wrapping that up. Uh, structural steel, or I'm sorry, excuse me, uh, number four, the interior load-bearing masonry walls are all complete, and those, uh, and those walls are all the walls holding up the, uh, precast sections of our mezzanine, which is our storage area above all the office spaces. So those are the inside walls for the office spaces, and those are complete. Oops. Um, great. Thank you. Uh, number five, the site grading, uh, you'll see in several of the photos, but the site grading is roughly between eighty and ninety percent complete. Uh, we're in stone right now, and we're looking forward to, to paving, uh, uh, the vast majority of it. About sixty percent of that will be pavement, and the rest is all landscaping. Uh, and then, uh, the west garage ventilation system upgrades have been completed. So if anybody recalls, the west garage is the current uh, west shed where we have the office, uh, operations section for the Parks Department and some of our other storage. So the first, uh, is the maintenance garage doors. This is looking west, or I'm sorry, you're looking east from the west side of the building. This is the actual, the view that you'll have from the garage side. So when we're, we bring our vehicles in, those first three doors in the middle of the page, those are all the service bay doors for the large, heavy equipment and the, uh, medium duty and light duty equipment. The two doors that are on the far left-hand side of the picture, uh, that first door is the wash bay, so where we'll clean all of our trucks, the, the truck wash is there, and the second door is the, uh, about three thousand square feet of cold storage for, uh, racking and palletized storage. This is, uh, looking west from the east side of the building, uh, kind of on the south, would be the, I guess, the southeast corner of the building itself. The first portion with the brick veneer on the lower side there, that is the office spaces. Um, and conference room and main, main entry to the building is on the, as a far to the, the left side. And then you'll see the exit doors and the one door is covered by the, the, uh, picture of all the people attending this meeting, but the, the door on the other side is, is, those are the exit doors where the large equipment will come out onto Eric Street. Uh, let's see, this is the very tight fit to the existing garage. So the existing store or the existing office space that we currently occupy is, uh, shown in the steel building. And then that brick building that, and the block building that is right adjacent to it is about two feet, two inches from the building wall. So it's very, very tight top right in right now. Uh, this is the superstructure. So this is the roof steel that, uh, is showing progress of where we're at, about eighty percent complete. Uh, this is the structure that obviously holds up the roof line and allows us to park all the heavy equipment underneath that roof. Uh, maintenance garage, uh, roof, these joints are complete now. As we speak, they were completed and the, and the actual roof panels, uh, were installed so that the steel roof is installed as of today. So uh, this is the interior masonry wall. So this is the mezzanine support and also separates our office spaces from the main garage space, the storage area. Um, the doorway in the center that you see there with the, the blue, uh, tarp material that's right there, that is the, uh, bay to the, to the, uh, new parks, uh, operations shop area. And this again is just another look from the inside of the, of the, uh, office spaces. This is the conference, we're standing approximately in the front doorway of the building. The conference room would be to the, to the, behind us, and in front of us, there is the training room, uh, slash break room slash community room. And then, uh, where that backhoe is, is the two locker rooms. They're working on the interior plumbing right now. Uh, and this is just another view looking back the other way. And this is the west shed new ventilation and heat system that was installed. So, uh, we'll be able to, to park vehicles and trucks in there and diesel vehicles in there without, uh, expixiating ourselves. And then that's the final exhaust system that is on the opposite end of the building. So that's on the far west end of the building. And then, like I said before, we're about eighty, ninety percent complete in the site grading, and we are in stone. This is the old James Place looking eastbound from the west side of the facility, and that is two grade waiting for asphalt. This is the, of course, you've seen the existing salt shed that we, we built. This is now graded, stoned in place, waiting for concrete and asphalt. And this is the center section between the west shed and my office space and the, and the current, uh, service bay shop, uh, where the white cars parked. There were, uh, there was a fueling station there. Those tanks are removed and cleaned and gone. So it opens up a little parking space for us right now. So what I think you can expect over the next three months, or we hope to expect over the next three months, is a fully completed structural steel this month. Uh, setting and, uh, installing all the precast mezzanine floor space. So those are all precast panels going in for the mezzanine floor. We expect that in the next two weeks. Uh, we'd like to get the, uh, install the roofing system, so that'll be the insulation and the, um, the, uh, uh, rubber roof that goes on top of that. And then the, uh, And then the the point in there where it says MEPFP, that is the Mechanical, Electrical Plumbing and Fire Protection System. Those roughens are, they're working on them right now. But we expect to see those completed sometime in by the time we get to October time. And then slab on grade and exterior doors and windows. We're hoping to get those poured, the floor poured, and then the doors and windows in in September. And the building completion, we're looking for sometime very late in February with the move-in date sometime shortly thereafter. However, the the building completion is a little bit further out than we can likely predict. But we are looking forward to hopefully getting the floor in so we can park in there in November. Budget update. So the construction contract sum we spoke of and the council approved eleven million five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars plus a five percent construction contingency. That took us to twelve million one hundred and twenty-one dollars and or one hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars. And completed to date with all stored materials either onsite or offsite, we have expended five million six hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and seven cents. And or approximately about forty-seven percent of the of the budget is is to date paid. And this also includes all building structures, salt shed, demolition, excavation, and all the HVAC equipment. So that's all paid for, stored and or installed. And then we'll see here, and you're not going to, we're not, we won't be able to see the far-left column or the remaining costs, but the soft costs, if the council will recall, we met several times on that. That included costs outside of the construction costs. Those were the acquisition of the land, design, permitting, construction oversight, and the utility relocations. We had about one one million one hundred and sixty-six thousand in there, and we've expended just a little over a million dollars. We have about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand remaining to cover the rest of the cost for construction oversight and then the installation of the new gas and electrical services. The building construction, we're about forty-seven percent complete, and this is the contract with Gilbank Construction. That was twelve, a little over twelve million dollars. We've again expended about five million six hundred thousand. We have about six and a half million, six million four hundred thousand remaining to get us through to the to the end of the contract. And then the other costs that were outside of the original construction costs were the furnishings and equipment. We have five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars budgeted on that, and to date, we've spent zero of that, but we are planning frantically for furnishings, racking and equipment that will go in the new shop. And that will come before the council here in a in a in a very short timeframe. And then the finals, obviously, we're about forty-seven, forty-eight percent complete on the total project to date. So we have a thirteen million eight hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars budgeted. And of that, we've spent six million six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, and we have about seven million left. And I think that is the last slide, if I recall. Yeah, that's the last slide. If there's any questions, I certainly can do the best I can to answer them for you.
Thank you for the update. Are there any?
I guess I would, I would, I was just going to say, Tom, thank you very much for your work on this project. I know it has been a stressful endeavor, so we very much.
It ebbs and flows.
We very much appreciate your project management as well as Bradley, who is on the Zoom here today, our our project architect. So thank you both for your work on this, and it wasn't too long ago that this was just kind of a a block on a site. So it's really cool to see it, to see it come out of the ground. And I'll just mention also that the the facility, there's going to be a partial facility tour on the fifteenth of August at five thirty P M. at the at the public works facility there. So I encourage folks to attend that as well, to see it in person.
Yep. Very good. Well, thanks for the time. Thank you for the update and the visuals. Very helpful. Item nine, unfinished business. There is none this evening. New business, item ten A, review and possible action relating to an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the school and the Fort Atkinson School District Police School Resource Officer P R S O P S R O program twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven. Chief Bump.
Hello. In twenty seventeen, we signed our first M O U with the school district to initiate cost sharing for the police school resource officer. And since then, we've had two, three-year contracts and a one-year contract, and now, or M O U, I should say, and now we're we're back up do. The M O U has really not changed since that first one we signed in twenty seventeen and has been a really positive program and has been a strong complement to the school and the police department with that connection that we've had. So I can answer any questions about the M O U, but definitely want to continue the memorandum of understanding and agreement with the school district and keep that school resource officer position going strong in our community. It really has been a really positive thing since enacted in twenty seventeen.
I will just note that that cost share is a fifty-fifty split, so that includes the the wages and benefits for the position. And as you can see on on the last page of the of the agreement there that is in the packet for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, that cost for the school district, the school district's portion fifty percent is sixty-two thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars. And also, I will note that the school district did approve this at their meeting, at their meeting in July. So they have, they have already, the school board, excuse me, has approved this intergovernmental agreement.
Any questions for the chief?
No, I think being a step parent to children in the school district, I've definitely seen firsthand the benefit and the professionalism of the school resource officer. And just throw my full support behind this. So unless there's any other questions or comments, I would move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the Fort Atkinson School District Police School Resource Officer Program through twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven.
Second. A motion is second to approve the agreement. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Fort Atkinson and the Fort Atkinson School District Police School Resource Officer Program for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten B, review and possible action relating to the proposal from August Winters and Sons Incorporated for ten thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to perform an emergency replacement of a twelve-inch pipe serving the water utility main station reservoir. Superintendent Armstrong.
First off, I'd like to thank you for the recognition. My staff and I, we we take pride in what we do, like doing what we do, so thank you very much. Um, well, three, which is right across the street, basically.
Jeff, Jeff, they can't hear you on the Zoom if you don't have a microphone.
They converge into that pipe right there, and where that clamp, as it says, twelve by ten, there used to be an injection point there for chemical, and it was a drilled-in point. We think that over time that cracked and started leaking, so we had to put that clamp around it to stop it from leaking. Basically, from the top of the screen down about four and a half, five foot, needs to be replaced out of that. It's thirty-three years old. It's served us well. It's time for a new piece. So it's, we reached out to a couple of different people, like I said, and one was sixteen thousand, some change. And August Winters was just more of a mechanical contractor, just more fitted to do this kind of work. It's ten thousand dollars, ten thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, like I said, it's we got the money to do it, so we need, it needs to get done, let's put it that way. So it's a critical piece of piping in that facility, so.
Hey, any?
Sweet Zoom people that are walking away.
Any questions? For Jeff?
I will just note that there's funds available in our water utility fund reservoir maintenance account for the project. And those those funds will be used for the purchase and the, as Michelle can tell you more about this, if you really want to get into the weeds, there's some depreciation that will be saved in order, you know, when we get this new piece of pipe in. So it really it's something that that does need to be done. We got the two proposals. However, we needed to order the the pieces right away.
Because it's some lead time on it. Like I said, we want to get it fixed sooner than later, because like I said, it's a very crucial piece of piping feeding into that reservoir, so.
Last thing we need is another.
Yes.
Incident like a couple of weeks ago that we had.
It was not a good night. I know that. So like I said, it's.
At least, you know, we got the ability to Band-Aid clamp it for the time being, so. I would move to approve the proposal from August Winter and Suns for ten thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to perform an emergency replacement of a twelve-inch pipe serving the water utility main station reservoir.
Second.
A motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Motion is to approve the proposal from August Winters and Suns Incorporated for ten thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars to perform an emergency replacement of a twelve-inch pipe serving the water utility main station reservoir. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved.
Thank you. And thank you again for the recognition.
You're welcome. Item eleven, miscellaneous. There are no miscellaneous items this evening. Claims, appropriations and contract payments. Item twelve A, review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and authorization of payment.
I move to approve the verified claims as presented.
So I can, motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. The motion is to approve the verified claims as presented. This is a roll call vote.
Councilman Jacob.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Les Goher.
Aye, and motion is approved unanimously. Item thirteen, adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second, a motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.